Please stand to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Motion's been made, is there a second?
A second.
Mike seconded, all in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting held January 17th, 2018, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jim, all in favor, aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Under communications, I have one letter that was sent to me in regard to sidewalks through email, and it's from Anthony Zaritis from Fairview Street, and he says, "I have a few questions regarding the sidewalk issue. My wife and I weren't able to attend the public hearing on January 17th. A flyer has been going around saying the most popular option the town has is that we, the homeowners, pay for half the cost. What would be the cost? Are the homeowners responsible for the sidewalk? And what other options are on the table? I know the time and place to voice our opinion was on January 17th, but I hope you can give me a few minutes of your time now. As for the sidewalk, I don't think the homeowner should be responsible for it. Right now, the homeowner is liable for the sidewalk. So if someone were to trip and fall, it would be my homeowner's insurance would have to pay out. What benefit do I get to carry this burden? Do we get a tax cut that I don't know about? Will the town of Portland cover any part of a lawsuit if someone were to get hurt? I think if the town decides to replace the sidewalk, the cost should be paid by everyone in Portland, since everyone and anyone is able to walk on it. If it was up to me, I would ask you to take the sidewalk out and leave it out. There's absolutely no benefit to me having this. I spoke to a few of my neighbors on Fairview, and they feel the same way. Thank you for your time, and I'm looking forward to hearing more." That's... Forty-three Fairview Street. Yep. I will give the letter to the Secretary of Transit. Spell the names. Cody.
Hi, my name is Richard Cody, I live at 383 Williams Street. I am also chairman of the Sewer and Water Commission, and that's why I'm here tonight. We have a financial problem in the sewer and water departments. Several years ago, probably close to a decade ago, we're appraised of the fact that the sewer and water departments were running a deficit, and the rates were not significantly producing income to cover the expenses, which means they were borrowing from the town general fund, I guess it is. We requested a 22 percent increase at that time, which should have bought the budget in balance. Board of Selectment at the time decided to increase rates 3 percent a year for five years, obviously knowing that that would not cover expenses. So the town continued to borrow money, or the Sewer and Water Commission continued to borrow money from the town treasury. Couple of years ago, we had a rate increase that we hoped would cover the operating expenses, which they were significant increases, and we also learned that the increases were not sufficient in the sewer side to cover expenses. I'd like to read a letter that we submitted when we found this out. We originally sent a letter on May 2nd, and the second one went out September 14th. At their September meeting, the Water and Sewer Commission requested that we send the following memo to our board on May 2nd, 2017, memo recommending that the Board of Selectment increase the rates by 5 percent, water and 10 percent sewer to reduce the deficit and cover proposed expenses. The Commission would appreciate a response indicating when rates will be discussed by the board. That was sent on September 13th, and we have not heard, and I've spoken personally to two of our Selectmen about it. I think I'll read to you the actual financial situation as we received them on 217 at the end of July. So this information, financial information, covers up to that date. The water deficit was $373,989.23 on 7/1/16. Revenues were $1,420,459.22. Expenditures, $1,408,295.22, indicating a surplus of $11,750.72. That was subtracted from the deficit, the original deficit. The water deficit remains at this time at $362,238.51. On the sewer side is the worst situation. The sewer fund deficit on 7/1/216 was $557,567.20. Revenues were $1,59,314.54. Expenditures were $1,140,141.14, gross loss of $80,826.60, with a present deficit of If you total those two deficits up, they come to over a million dollars. The sewer and water use owes the town. The capital improvements that were recommended by the Teague Bond Report, there's in your budget request this year for like a million dollars in each department to cover increased expenses. So according to the charter, you're supposed to set the rates that will cover operating expenses. That's why we requested a 5 and 10 percent increase, 5 for the water department, which did have actually a surplus, but to help pay off that deficit. And if we have a 10 percent increase in the water rates, it would produce about $140,000. And it would be able to pay off some of its debts if our figures are correct to the town. But right now, it's increasing. And if you take an $80,826 operating loss last year, that's about $1,500 a week. So that's increased by $1,500 a week since July 1st, and it continues to increase and will continue to increase until such time that the rates are adjusted. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other public comment? We'll go on to item seven, which is Sidewalk Committee Recommendations, and I'll turn it over to Jim Tripp.
Yeah, did you have, did you have anything? I don't want to say that. Okay. All right, so we have a couple of things going on. First, we did get a list of recommended target, it's basically right now a draft copy until we approve it, of sidewalk improvement projects, selected sidewalks dated 1/31/2018, and it lists the sidewalks that we're looking at targeting potentially. These are the ones that were recommended by the Sidewalk Committee with some modifications based on the discussions that had occurred both at the public meeting and other notations, and then at the joint Sidewalk Committee meeting, Sidewalk Committee and Sidewalk Ordinance Committee meeting that happened last week. So we ended up with a final list. So it's, it gives basically, if you look at it, a target of the streets where we have a complete list of streets that would be done under the program. One of the goals of the program at this point is also to look at where can we target some smaller sections, and also get some, get some other sort of targeted repairs, some smaller sections where you have some trip hazards or some known issues, where there simply isn't enough money to do the whole section right now, but we can do a little bit of work and make that section of sidewalk safer. The idea is looking at the set of streets here is to put this out to bid, see how the bids come back. If the bids are favorable and we have some money, that surplus money could then be targeted at doing some of the work that we're looking to do to correct some of the other areas that need some spot, I guess for lack of a better term, spot repairs. If not, we have some deductive alternates that we'll put in based on some recommendations that were made, and we could take a look at pairing back some of those streets. Those would be the areas that we would only do one side of a street, and that would allow us, again, to free up some money to do some of the spot repairs. So now on all those streets where you would do at least one side, you have a safe travel path to get, for example, from East Main Street to Main Street on any of the roads, but maybe one side is not done, but that allows us to do some work that has to get done to make another section of sidewalk safer. That's the list, that's the target list right now from the Sidewalk Committee. Any questions on that or comments?
I like when I hear one side. If I read Carrie Olson's memo the right way, if we're challenged, it's going to be problematic in the future on who has the liability of these walks. So I'm glad you're now looking at one side of each street. One path is better than no path, and yeah, in a perfect world, it'd be great to have both sides. We don't live in a perfect world, and we're in financial trouble, I think, big picture. So I really like that. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Yeah, and the goal is when we see how the bids come back, the way this is written, and I want to thank, you know, obviously the Sidewalk Committee for their work, but also Rick Kelsey, they did a nice job putting something together that's going to give us some flexibility when we see what the numbers are, then we're going to have some flexibility to make some, I think, intelligent decisions. So I'm pleased with that. Now, the second piece of this, if you take a look, everyone should have a little packet, it's just three pages, it talks about the sidewalk program. This was the subject of the public hearing, and we talked about those options a few weeks Basically, what we are looking at is the same goal, right? The goal of what we're trying to do is to figure out the best way to leverage the million dollars that was allocated in the bond to get the most work done in the most efficient way possible, and try to spread the benefits out amongst the majority, you know, basically as many residents, get as much sidewalks done as we can rationally. And the idea right now is that that's a split. There are efficiencies, we're doing large sections of sidewalks, so we certainly want to take care of that and take advantage of that, but we also recognize that we can't do that everywhere. That's why some money gets put towards the spot repair. The three options we discussed at the public meeting were the town spends the million dollars on the infrastructure and does, pretty much prioritizes larger sections. The second option was to look at a 50-50 cost share model, and basically to use that as seed money for an incentive program. And the option three was to use, the town would spend the million dollars on sidewalk infrastructure and target the repair of smaller deteriorated sections as well as larger sections on one side of the streets previously evaluated. That leveraged a lot of the work that was done by the Sidewalk Committee and gave some benefits in other places. The considerations, one of the considerations that got us working as an ordinance committee group was, you know, we had to make sure that whatever we were going to do, we would be okay given the current structure of the ordinance. And looking at it, we're fine, we can, you know, we don't think that right now, in terms of, there's no immediate needs or immediate changes that we have to make to the ordinance to proceed with the program. We will continue to work as a committee and to evaluate the ordinance, look for those places where we can update it, simplify some of the processes, things of that nature, but we don't need to hold this up, which allows us to get this out and kind of get to it in while we have the optimum bidding window. And really, we had a lot of feedback, which was, I think, for all of us appreciated. We had a lot of feedback both at the public hearing and in emails that have come out, and we basically, when we reviewed all that, sort of in its entirety, the decision that we came to, the conclusion we came to, consensus is probably the better word when the decision gets made here, but the consensus we came to is that when we look at that, folks right now are not looking at doing this work with the bond money in a cost-sharing model. It doesn't, it wasn't really how they anticipated the bond money would be spent, and at this point, they really just aren't looking to do it as a cost share. There are other factors, I think, that were part of that, but that was kind of how we looked at it. Based on that, by the way, is anybody, I know that, I want to, Mike and Lou did an enormous amount of work with the committee as well, so I don't know if you have anything you want to add on any of this, just jump in. I'm just kind of running through this, but...
No, I think you, you know, you've covered it very well, and the list of streets that we're looking to work on are very, are in need of replacing, and at the same time, looking at, with the hope that the bid comes in lower and that we can do some repair on Main Street as well.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add to that is, we've given it a lot of thought, and I think it's been interesting to see it evolve from some very specific streets into trying to get as much bang for the buck as we can. So I think where we're at right now is certainly improved significantly over time. You know, I think we've come to a better plan that spreads out the money in, I think, the most effective way possible. So I think, I think we're at a good point now.
Thank you. Based on all the feedback, it seemed like from a consensus that the preferred option was effectively, most closely matched what we had presented as option three, which was the town spends the million dollars on sidewalk infrastructure, basically on larger sections of streets targeted, as well as leveraging a portion of the investment to perform repair of smaller deteriorated sections where practical. So I think that would be the recommendation coming out of the committee. There is a third page, it talks about how this would basically work, kind of already summarized a lot of this, and I don't think we really need to go into it here, we can just kind of get into a discussion, but the key here is, just to reiterate, the goal is to basically evaluate the bid responses, determine the final scope of work that can be performed within the budgetary limits of the allocated funds. The goal is to replace larger sections along selected streets, as well as leveraging a portion of the funds to perform targeted repair. I think at this point, that kind of concludes the formal, or at least the part that we had documented, that would be the recommendation to proceed, but effectively what's option three.
Put it up for discussion.
The only thing I would, on behalf of Rick, I would add that certainly now we have a list that's out there being reviewed by people to realize that they fall within that area that as we proceed, we get successfully get through the bidding process, they are, Rick's department's going to have to reach out to everyone and just let them know he's going to need temporary easements on many of those matters. Since now there's an official list, and I would assume we're going to vote on it, maybe it's really official, but just to let everyone know.
Dan?
Yeah, I guess I'm kind of stuck on Carrie's memo. I think it opens up, and I want everybody else's opinion. I think it alludes that the town is probably going to be liable for all the trip hazards in the entire town. She doesn't mention the state road. Lou brought that up, that maybe we would do some repairs on Main Street. Obviously, I'd want to get a legal opinion whether Main Street is our liability or not right now. The town attorney seems to be leaning towards that they're all our liability, so that opens up a bigger problem. Here we are, we just spent all this time and effort, and everybody did a great job picking these roads to go fix, and now all of a sudden, town attorney says we're probably going to be on the hook for all of the walks. So if that's the case, I think we now need to flip the way you're wording it tonight, is all the trip hazards that are out there need to be fixed, and then what's left over, we go to the roads. Because if we are liable as a town, I can assure you as a resident and a taxpayer, I would want all of the known trip hazards fixed, especially if our town attorney is leaning that way, and maybe we want clarification from Rick as her memo wasn't ironclad on her position, but it alluded to where she was going. So if that is the case, and we are now on the hook for every trip out there, I think we have no choice but to start spending the million dollars on the known trips, even though it's not efficient, it's not the right way to proceed, but if that is what the town attorney's telling us, that's a big problem. So what do you guys think?
And, you know, I did a little research as well, in addition to what Carrie had mentioned. And Carrie's information basically was talking more about the abutter's responsibility and whether we can get the abutters to actually pay. And right now, she thinks that maybe that would be very difficult to do. But addressing the liability, in many of the articles that I read through the Office of Legislative Research, Connecticut Office of Legislative Research, it says that the municipality is not responsible for liability. The state definitely is not responsible for liability in the state statutes. And then it does mention that the abutter may be liable for liability. So in the case of the municipality being liable, either now or in the future, it doesn't seem like we would be liable.
And when you say liable, do you mean for repairs or liable as far as a lawsuit?
As far as a lawsuit.
Okay. I'm more concerned if we're liable for repairs, because then it's gross negligent. If we are liable for the repairs and we choose, we choose not to, then it's gross negligent on the town of Portland's part.
Well, if you take a look at one of the pieces on Main Street where there's a six-inch difference between the sidewalk and the next part of the sidewalk, that seems to be negligent. But I think that if we were to repair and make things safer, I think in the eyes of the court, they would kind of say that you're not liable for improving sidewalks.
Well, I think you bring up a good point. You and I both aren't attorneys right now. The town attorney, I know you want to say her context was to refer to it whether we could get them to pay, that's not how I read it. She was stating the state statute and whether she felt we could essentially get that. And the answer is, in her opinion at this point, and there are others attorneys that'll say the opposite, so, but right now, I think this board, we now know what Carrie has put in writing, Attorney Olson, and I think it's, we have to figure this out. We can't get it wrong. If we are on the hook, I want to fix trip and fall, or little trip hazards, and I don't know how many there are, maybe there's 200 grand worth. Fine, but I want to do that first, if we're liable. If we're not, proceed with what we have, and life's good. But that's a big deal to me.
But I guess to that point, though, there's been no new legislation in over 20 years, I believe, on this subject. So we know there's been existing cases that have occurred where this town was not held liable. So there's no new legislation that's coming out of it that would suggest that now all of a sudden changed last night, and now we are all of a sudden responsible for these sidewalks, and it's just...
Maybe you should get together with Carrie on the next memo, and let's get it in writing so we know how to proceed. That's fine. I'm going by what Carrie Olson, our town attorney, has advised us and told us. That's what we need to do. We have a town attorney for a reason. We have to take her memo, that's what she just put in writing. We need to get this straight, I need to get this straightened out in my opinion before I vote. If the town residents are liable for all of the trip hazards, let's go fix the trip hazards. If we're not, let's proceed with the great job everybody did identifying the streets. That's simple. And I don't know how many trip hazards there are, if there's 100 grand, 200 grand, 50 grand, I don't know that answer, but I think if that is the case, let's get to the bottom of it. You know, it's real simple. And or have Carrie Olson write down other memos saying, "In no way are we liable for all those trip hazards," because right now, that memo will get brought up in a future lawsuit, period. FYI can find that memo.
When I read the memo, I don't see that. I see that she addresses snow and ice, and the abutters responsible for that, and then she says in the memo, the liability of ice, she talks about liability of ice, and then that's the responsibility of the abutters.
Correct.
We've had several court, several suits, and actually three this year, of people that have fallen. None of them have caused the town any cost, the liability that I know. In other words, we haven't had to pay any liability, insurance, benefits to the people that are injured. And I know that there have been others in the past, I haven't checked those as well. But I'm trying to quickly read through this again, because I don't see where Carrie had said that we're liable.
I'd point out that a substantial amount of the work that is listed on this sheet are sidewalks that need to be repaired. I mean, that's why the committee selected these sidewalks. And I think it's important to point out that our recommendations that came from the committee, as well as the Sidewalk Ordinance Committee, is to repair the sidewalks to make schools safer, to make walkability better within the areas where we have many people walking, such as the town hall, the senior center, youth services, parks and recreation on Main Street, the Portland Care and Rehabilitation, where many people are utilizing walkers and wheelchairs, and other areas within half a mile of a school. I mean, that's something our complete streets policy has put forward. It's something the committee, through hours and hours and hours and hours of work, have determined that these would best serve improvements to our sidewalks. The Sidewalk Ordinance Committee reviewed again and concurred with committee. There are certainly lots of places where we need to do repairs on sidewalks, and the voters have given us a substantial amount of money to make, I think, a substantial impact. I think we need to proceed. We certainly need to proceed to bid and see what the cost is associated with these repairs, recognizing, and I've asked the committee, because I've attended many of their meetings along with the, combined with the Sidewalk Ordinance Committee, that we utilize this as perhaps the first phase of many phases. There's no way a municipality can go out and fix every single piece of, and I think it's quarter, I don't know what the amount of inches is for ADA, Rick, you've...
Quarter inch.
Quarter inch. I mean, that is certainly a goal that we have, and I think the voters and the taxpayers in the town have to be applauded for voting to spend a million dollars to improve their sidewalks. And for us to not proceed with the hours and hours of work and analysis that's been done by the Sidewalk Committee would be negligent on our part. Acknowledging that Phase Two, probably Phase Three, and it may be more phases, will need to have improvements in their sidewalks. I'm prepared to proceed, to go to bid for the recommended sidewalks, and also prepared to work concurrently with the committee and the citizens to determine how we proceed to the next phase, to make sure, as we know, other sidewalks are repaired appropriately. Mike, did you want to say something?
Yeah, my feeling, I'm going to echo a little bit of that. When I'm looking at some of the cases that were presented from the committee before with other municipalities and issues there with sidewalks, there was a great deal of latitude with the municipalities and the towns to spend and fix the sidewalks or roads as they, as they felt best. So there seemed to be, and again, I'm not a lawyer, but it seemed to be the towns were given a great deal of latitude to decide what they're going to do, how they're going to do it, without the liability. So I'm comfortable proceeding as well. And again, at the same track, you know, reviewing with the attorney again to make sure that, you know, we're on the right place, but I feel comfortable going forward with this.
Rick, did you...
I have a question. We're still maintaining our sidewalk ordinance, aren't we? And in that sidewalk ordinance, doesn't it say that the homeowners are responsible? So if there was to be a slip and fall on somebody's sidewalk in front of their property, then if there was any litigation, wouldn't it go against the homeowner and not the town? Based on the fact that we have this sidewalk ordinance?
I think I'll take that as a rhetorical question, because I don't think that at this point, we can really, because we're not, we're not the insurance company, we're not the lawyers. We've also consulted with Kerma. I attended a recent workshop where they did point out towns new do need to proceed and make sure that their sidewalks are taken care of. And I think that's just what we're doing. And I think that it's very responsible of us to continue, and at least, let's put this out to bid and see what the prices are. And we'll know better how many dollars we will have to also go after additional work that may be needed. that may be needed. But unless we put this out to bid, we're not going anywhere. I think we need to proceed.
Yeah, that's, that was one of the things I just was going to add, that one of the reasons that we, this was structured, the way it's structured, if you look at it, is that we've got three streets that are sitting as deductive alternates. And looking at the amount of sidewalk that was required, we intentionally kept the dollars off of this, just because we don't want to do anything that would contaminate bidding going forward, but that would provide significant money, that gives us the option to do the break fix. So what it allows us to do is to take a look and say, if the bids come back favorable and we have just extra money in general, we can put that towards some of the spot repairs. But if we look and say, you know, feel we need to do more spot repairs, we also now, by doing it this way, have the ability to, you know, basically deduct a couple of the streets, do one side of a street, and create one good path on one side of a street and one path that's not as good, you know, that would be the way it is. But at least you'd have one good path in between the streets, and then that money could be used for those spot repairs. The idea, the concept was to keep as much flexibility to do just that. How many places can we go and hit the spot repairs? So, in addition to getting a favorable bid, we also have a mechanism as well for that. I guess first, I do want to go to bid, I don't want you guys to think I don't. Rick, you talked about a slip and fall, slip and falls are very clear in the state statute for as far as ice and snow. Slip and falls go on the homeowner. They are different than a trip hazard. Trip hazards are whoever's responsible for fixing it, potentially could be liable.
Well, that was my point.
Well, you said slip, so maybe you meant trip.
Okay, well, I meant any kind of fall, but...
Okay, well, they're different, and it's a big deal, each one's different. Slip and fall due to snow, 100% abutter. The state statute is very, very, very clear on that. State statute's not so clear on the other one, and that's where we get the memo from Carrie, on if we are now going to be responsible for, or using her term, not able to enforce our ordinance as far as repair. Lou, you brought up, you brought up a few, I believe you said three lawsuits, and then some older ones, and you weren't aware of any that we lost. I don't believe we have lost, but none of those got a hold of this memo. This memo's a game changer.
I...
Let's be real here, this memo...
No, let's be clear.
Yeah, exactly, thank you.
That there is appellate court decisions, as well as superior court decisions. A memo is an opinion. So, what is going to be looked at is more either Supreme Court appellate court decisions that have jurisdiction throughout the state. I believe she's referring more to Supreme, I mean, to superior court decisions. I mean, we've got to do something about our sidewalks. And as I said, I think that the committee has put forth a valiant effort, and you bring forth good points, Ben, we need to continue to work on this, and we need to continue to allocate dollars toward improvements of our sidewalks. I'm not disagreeing with you.
No.
But I do believe we need to proceed, and it's an opinion letter, it's not a court decision that our local, that our, excuse me, our, yeah, our town attorney is making. She's giving us her opinion, but when it comes to law, as we all know, it's set by the legislature, the governor, and court cases. So, I just think we need to proceed with trying to improve our sidewalks.
Using your phrase, Susan, let's be clear, the next lawsuit that comes in, or even one of the pending ones, is going to use a memo that is produced by our town attorney stating her opinion on where the liability lies for future repair.
But Ben, what I'm trying to say is, there are other court decisions that will even maybe, because I don't have them with me tonight, but I'll share with you what I got at our recent KERMA meeting, that may lend support to what you're saying. And that certainly is something that we do need to pay attention to. I'm agreeing with you.
Right, in the future, we may be at a different legal opinion where this liability, because not all attorneys agree with Carrie's position, so, but we're on the same page. We need to do something, we have a million dollars to spend, the taxpayers want us to spend. My biggest thing is if there are big trip hazards known, they need to be addressed. If it means giving up, I've always been a fan of one side of each street, and we can worry about the other side later. Pick which side is more important, it gives everybody a nice path to get around, and we go from there. We are going to need the funds, if we are going to be on the hook for trip hazards, I want to fix trip hazards. We're all on the same page.
Right, I agree.
Thank you.
So what's your pleasure, Jim, for going forward with the list and...
Yeah, I guess, I mean, should I, I can just make a motion, right? So I guess I'll make a motion to proceed, to go to bid, leveraging the draft list, sidewalks improvement project, dash selected sidewalks dated 1/31/2008 by RDK as the basis for the bid, and that we look at, and I don't know if it's two motions or not, but to basically look at...
You can put it in one.
Yeah, and basically would adopt the recommendation of the sidewalk ordinance committee to proceed with paying for the work, using what was referenced as option three, the town spends the million dollars on sidewalk infrastructure, from the $1 million bond that was authorized in November 2016.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second to five, Mike? Laura, do you need anything further from that?
I have copies for you, if you...
Does that motion still give us the ability to go to one side, all of that?
Yeah.
Maybe if I do, Ben?
That is, I'll show you, Ben.
Take a look.
Right here. If you look at this, right here, deductive alternates is with the three stars.
Yeah, but we still need to have the ability to change, if we need to, do we have the ability to change? Say it comes in very bad, we always need the ability to be able to change our streets.
Well, I think what we've built in is a lot of flexibility with how the bid would come in, so that based on where, right now, if you looked at, based on where the entire, where we would expect this bid to come in in its entirety, okay, we may be in good shape, period. Okay, we may already have, depending how favorable the bid is.
And we always reserve the right to reject any and all bids as submitted.
Right, and then even if the bid comes in exactly, you know, on the nose, we have enough streets in there where we could free up a significant amount of money to do spot repairs. I'm hesitant to throw out numbers, just because I don't want to...
No, I know, but we're in the motion to say we can put money for spot repairs, just...
By saying that we adopting the option three sidewalk, you know, as presented.
I just want to see the exact, I want the ability in the future...
It says in its entirety, option three, with the recommendation, proceed with option three, town spends $1 million on sidewalk infrastructure, a larger section of the streets targeted, as well as leveraging a portion of investment to perform repairs on smaller deteriorated sections where practical. And then this mechanism is what gives us the bids, so we'll actually know how much dollars by taking out some of the larger sections, we'll have to do the spot repairs. It's intended to give us those numbers, so we'll know what we can work with.
And seeing that it's our bid, we can, for example, if this comes in the way we don't like it, we can change it, correct? Susan?
Rick, do you hear the question?
Now, if I could, you know, I spoke with Tom Robinson also this afternoon, we had a meeting with the engineers, we're, with your direction, we can put this thing out to bid, I think, in less than a month, which is good. So, the question, and I understand what you're trying to do, there's probably a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of deductive alternates there for you that are starred. So, you have the ability, but when I craft this bid, it's not open-ended. So, in other words, the way it's set up, and I think it's set up very, very well, is you have the ability to deduct those three that are starred there. You don't have the ability to say, okay, we don't like this, and we're going to take out this, and we're going to do that.
Then you'd be rejecting the bid, right?
You can't do, yeah, and that would be foolish. I mean, you know, you're in a good position, you've thought it out, you've got some money, you're making the first step in 70 years to do something right, you know, you need to move ahead. What I will add is that, should you decide, and that's fine, to eliminate those deductive alternates and go to spot repairs, realize, you're not prepared to go to spot repairs or anywhere near ready to go to spot repairs until you prepare a whole nother set of bid documents to do those spot repairs and identify those spot repairs. And when you go to identify those spot repairs, you need to have a basis. And that basis might very well be anything greater than a quarter inch deflection, and if you go there, because that's ADA, so I mean, it's not an arbitrary thing where, geez, that's humped up eight inches, and that's more unsafe than the one right now that's pending, you would have a hard time deciding where the person fell and is suing the state and the town. It's like this, so, you know, to go to the next step, and I think you should and need to, and I put money in your coming budget to maybe help you do that, you need to come up with a program to identify what is a trip hazard, where it is, and there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of them. So the next step in doing spot repairs is to identify the spots. And that in itself isn't just a walk down the road and say, oh, I don't like that, and there's also other issues where you've got state trees, the issue right now, the one we're being sued on, a state tree lifted the sidewalk on a state road slightly, and the person fell and is suing the state and the town. So it isn't, it isn't those big ones necessarily that are eight inches high, so the next step requires a whole nother set of criteria and a whole nother set of bid documents, it isn't going to be, okay, we got a couple hundred thousand dollars, let's go up on, we'll send the contractor up on Main Street and start patching 50 spots, doesn't work. Whole nother set of bid documents, whole nother, so there's more to it. I thought, Rick, we did have a conversation of that we were going to put in the bids, as I understood it, a per foot, like four some smaller sections if we need to do that. And we are, but with that, typically with that, when you do that, and we had a long discussion today with the engineer on how to do that, and typically when you put in a unit price item, this bid will go out lump sum, which is the ideal way to do it, same as we just did the other project, with a few unit price items, okay? You need to quantify those. So if I put, for example, contractor provides a price for removal and replace four-foot wide concrete sidewalk, I need to give them a quantity. That quantity could be 3,000 feet. In other words, I can't just say, okay, give me a price to do, replace this and replace that without any further information, doesn't work. So again, the way that you would go about spot repairs would be, for example, we get the bids back in, you folks say we want to deduct those three items, that translates to whatever, X dollars. You then, the next step for you would be to say, okay, somebody go out and identify the spot repairs, and there will be many repairs, depending on what you decide. At that point, you'll have to create drawings just like I've created for this set, so it's something you would probably do next year. I want you to be clear on that, this is not something that, we're going to get the bids back and you're going to say, okay, forget those, let's go fix the spot repairs.
There's the three...
Doesn't work.
There's the three that can be...
Doesn't work, right. So you'll have the ability to say, we want to withhold X dollars out of that bid, and I'm not sure that's the best thing for you to do, because you'll get the best bang for the buck with the larger quantities. When you go to a unit price basis, you'll get whacked. I mean, the contract, it's not the same, you know, let's say we're hoping for less than $100 a foot, I can guarantee you, you get into small spot repairs, that $100 a foot goes to $150 a foot, so it's not the same. Just want you to be clear on how that would work, it isn't going to be just a jump up the rug.
I think too, Rick, to point out, some of the sidewalks that have been done this year have been Waverly Avenue at the senior center, Main Street at Brownstone Intermediate School and the tennis, or the former tennis courts.
By the town hall, $110,000 worth of work we did, and it was in front of town-owned properties, which is what we needed to do to get our house in order. So, but just be clear on that, I mean, it's a great...
The library, too.
The library, we did a little small piece here. So that's realistically how that would work. It isn't going to be just, okay, we got a couple hundred thousand dollars left, okay, go up on Main Street and, you know, fix this, fix that, we can paint some lines, and you do, it isn't, doesn't work that way, just doesn't work that way. Not very well anyways. I think you'd leave yourself open for, you would be much better to do it in another bid, but you're going to have to get ready to do that, you're going to have to set up some criteria, what constitutes a trip and fall.
But these sidewalks that are identified by the sidewalk committee...
Those are well thought out.
Those are very well thought out, and it involves a lot of sidewalks that will now be walkable. And I do want to, because sometimes I forget, to thank, we have two committee members here tonight, along with the selectmen's committee, I know how much work you've put into this, as well as a lot of the research that's required, so thank you to the selectmen that have attended, as well as to the committee. And it's just, I wouldn't say it's the beginning, but it's certainly a program that's worth developing further and proceeding as the selectmen have stated tonight. Are you ready for the question? Yes? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, that was a good discussion, as have all the meetings. And I'll point out, there's been a lot of discussion on sidewalks, and it's very valuable.
Thank you to all the, to the other committee members, as well as, again, we had a lot of selectmen that did show up at a lot of the meetings, and the sidewalk committee also attended, we had a couple of joint committee meetings, and it was really good feedback and discussion, so thank you.
In addition, town staff and our engineers, Rick's house has done a really fabulous job in putting the sidewalk program together, and we have to put these things up to bid, as we've all said, to see, you know, where the prices are landing. Hopefully, it's a good season, we certainly don't want to miss this window, because it's very, very critical. The next item that we're talking about is to set a couple of dates, a public hearing and a special time meeting for the purchase of 222, 230, and 248 Brownstone Avenue properties, something we've been working on probably since 2013, if I'm not mistaken. And our licensed environmental professional from Tyan Bond is here tonight, Amy Valencourt, and she has a few words she's going to say to us. I also want to welcome Lilia Gilteca, who is our consultant, who works with us from the Department of Economic and Community Development. DECD is the state agency that has granted us $750,000 for the cleanup of this land on Brownstone Avenue. And I think it's remarkable that you're here tonight, and I'm very grateful that you are, because it shows that the dollars are there for us in this project. I've had a lot of people question, if you buy this property, are you really going to clean it up, and is the state going to follow through on their promise? So maybe after Amy's presentation, if you could make a statement, that would be helpful, Lilia, but we'll start with Amy.
So, I have prepared a fact sheet, there are some new selectmen faces, some that are not so new. And along the way, if you have any questions, just let me know, if you maybe need some history.
Yeah, and there's extra copies that I made, too, if anyone wants a copy. Help yourselves.
So, as Susan has said, probably three years ago, we started embarking on this project. I think I've been in front of, been at the selectmen meetings every six months for the past three years through the process. It's been a long road, we've achieved many hurdles. At this point, I feel like we're in the home stretch, and I said to Susan, blue skies, that's all I can see now. So, I'm sure you're all familiar with the property. You know, we started this because it's riverfront land, you have invested a lot of money into this area, doing the Riverfront Park, Brownstone Discovery, the Brownstone Quarry, you know, started the planning, you've done a riverfront overlay, I mean, you've really put a lot of effort into this area and revitalization. This particular group of properties has been used for industrial purposes for a long time. Originally, part of the Brownstone Quarries was home to all the cutting operations, the shipping operations, and later in time became used for other industrial... the shipping operations, and later in time became used for other industrial purposes, primarily bulk storage of petroleum products. Over the past 10 years, this property's been sitting vacant, blighted, contaminated, and it's really deterred what the town has focused their efforts on in the area, um, you know, for economic and community development, again, um, bringing the riverfront back to the public, promoting jobs, promoting open space. So, with all the effort that's been put into the planning, the plan of conservation development, the riverfront overlay, this area really was a focus to get this area cleaned up and put back to productive use. The only way this was going to happen was with the town's involvement. You know, the property was upside down, the, um, it was in an estate. So, Susan and the town had approached, um, the property owners and we went down the road of getting a brownfields assessment grant through DECD and assessing the contamination. So, for the past three years, my job has been going out there and developing a cost estimate and a remedial action plan and helping the town, you know, navigate the way through the brownfields program. The state's program was set up exactly for this situation, where abandoned and blighted property is deterring reuse or economic development in a town. So, the handout that I gave you gave some highlights of the properties. Three contiguous parcels of land owned by the estate and is an economic and community development opportunity for the town. So, everyone had seen that at the beginning. We go down the road of negotiating with these property owners once we get a full estimate on the remediation costs. We look at the redevelopment potential of the site. And now, early on, when the Brownstone Quorum started down this road, they had a vision, you know, historic preservation, um, you know, again, waterfront uses, trying to bring it back to, um, the public. So, in order to get the grants, we had to promote that in the application. And the uses that we have here, really, they have to be determined through public outreach. Even though the quorum started something, you know, several years ago, really, the uses have to be determined through public outreach, a market study. The things that we look at, at, for this property with development is you could have a visitor's center. It's a very good area for a visitor's center. A waterfront restaurant. We already know that Brownstone Discovery Park has limited, um, you know, sale of food. You know, we've talked with them, um, you know, they can't really expand where they are. And they would love the idea of having that amenity right there. As it is, people bring their kids there and then they drive over the bridge and they have dinner over in Metal Town. And the community itself here has limited choices. So, adding a waterfront restaurant there, and it could be something from, you know, like a blue oar right on the water, which is what we've displayed in the depiction, or whatever, you know, would work here, but that all has to be determined. Other things that we determine through, you know, going through the Brownstone Quorum reports and talking with property owners in the Brownstone Discovery Park is the parking. Everybody knows it's an issue over there. What was conveyed by Sean is that if he had the parking, he thinks he could double his, um, ticket sales, which again, that all goes back to economic development for the town because you received some of the proceeds from that. So, helping promote, expand that business could, um, create that, you know, gap in the revenue that you're feeling now from state cuts. Furthermore, you know, having that link between what you have now for Brownstone Discovery Park and that 40-acre walking park, all the venues that you have at the Riverfront Park, you need that overflow parking, you need that extra space. So, all these right now on paper look, um, not only doable, viable, and sustainable. You have a lot of floodplain there. So, what can you do in a floodplain? What can you build? You can certainly have parking. You could certainly have kiosks that could promote your riverfront park, could promote Brownstone Discovery Park. So, there's a lot of options, but that has yet to be determined. A couple of highlights on the fact sheet about brownfields in general and our state program. Since 2012, the state's invested more than $225 million in brownfields development. Even though they went through all these cuts at the state level, they kept funding this program because they have proven results, proven success. It was just, um, last week where there was a press release where they gave a stat that is amazing. And this was given by the commissioner, Catherine Smith. So, for every dollar the state's invested in brownfields redevelopment, they've, non-state partners, and that could be private development, could be a municipality putting up, um, could be business, you know, businesses, um, they've invested or will invest $11.41 per dollar. So, that's a remarkable return. And on the back page of the fact sheet, we're going to get down to the nitty-gritty. Now, I know some of you haven't, you know, heard my spiel every six months for the last three years on how we've muddled through the assessment and what I found. But what I tried to do was boil it down for you here and give you an overview. So, the site's contaminated and we have varying degrees of contamination. In the area of the tanks, they've leaked. We have deeper contamination. It could be eight feet, 12 feet deep in some areas where we have to go and we have to dig that out. The majority of the contamination that we encountered across the site, widespread, was surface releases of petroleum. There's asphalt tar batching plant and bulk storage petroleum where they dispersed in the trucks. So, there was a lot of surface releases. So, all the site assessments have been completed. Cost estimates were developed to attain that state grant. And we developed a preliminary remedial action plan. And I have to call it preliminary until you tell me exactly what you're going to reuse it for and where you're going to put your buildings, because my final plan is going to be based around that reuse. Now, while we're going to go out and dig some of the grossly impacted soils out, the widespread contamination, although it doesn't meet residential criteria, it does meet a commercial criteria. And it can be left in place to meet state statutes. There is a series of consolidation and capping that we plan. And with parking lots, you can have contamination beneath the parking lot and you can cap it and you can have it beneath the buildings. This type of contamination that we have here, which is low-level petroleum, um, higher than residential, but allowable for commercial. Now, the remedial plan, it, it would be impossible to go in there and dig everything out because if it were a developer, if it were possible, a developer would have already taken up this property. So, with our plan, again, we're going to go in and dig. We give an estimated volume. We're looking at 1,200, 1,500 tons of soil, based on the contamination being petroleum and the fact that it's non-hazardous. Does have to come out, but it's non-hazardous. It can be disposed of locally. And what I mean by locally, it doesn't have to be trucked out of state. It can go to Phoenix soils. Then the onsite consolidation and capping. Like I said, it, on the fact sheet in the back, you'll see the remedial plan. You'll see a bunch of little blobs. You know, they look a lot smaller in the photo, but when you're out there in the site, you know, each of those have to be excavated and consolidated. Now, in the plan, let's say you want to have some open space areas. Now, open space, you wouldn't have paving or you wouldn't have a building. And we want to keep around the river and the flood, you know, that floodplain area free and clean. So, we have to move that up. We're going to move it up and we're going to put it under whatever development. Now, currently where the building is on 248, that's out of the floodplain. Although the building is not salvageable, you certainly can rebuild in that area. And we can consolidate under there and we can consolidate under pavement. In the areas where you want to keep it open space, I have to have at least four feet of clean layer on top for a direct exposure. Now, through my assessment, there was nothing that I found that was, um, let's say loose petroleum product, like on the groundwater, or flowing, or migrating off-site. And so, we, we know that, you know, again, no x-ray vision and no crystal ball. I'm only as good as that two-inch hole, but I put hundreds of them throughout the site. And so, based on that, I'm not anticipating that we're going to have off-site migration or any, um, issues with floating petroleum on groundwater. So, that was really the overview. And to get into the remedial action plan, we have to take down those tanks. We have to demolish the buildings. Again, they're, they're not really salvageable for reuse. And so, there were hazardous building materials found in association with those buildings. We have some asbestos, some lead, and some PCB clock. Um, the paint on the tanks was lead. And so, we had an issue with how are we going to get them down? And we want to recycle them, because you can recycle the metal of flood and you could get a salvage value. So, reaching out to contractors and then reaching out to salvage yards and getting a price for recycling, and that's how we estimated what it would cost for that. Then we come down, um, again, I told you about the excavation and off-site disposal. We're, we're saving, we're having some cost savings because it can go locally, not large transportation off-site. Environmental land use restriction. So, with this, because we are capping and because we are leaving contamination that exceeds residential, but not commercial, uh, standard, we will have to have an environmental land use restriction on the property that'll get recorded on the deeds. It'll say, "This property is restricted to commercial industrial area." And then we'll have a map that'll show what, where the areas are that are capped. And it'll basically be a no-dig notice. You know, these areas are capped. Now, in the future, let's say, you know, you want to do something in that area, you can release the environmental land use restriction and do the remediation at that time to whatever level you want. But for this development and for commercial use of the property, this is the way to go to, um, remediate this property for community economic development purposes and meeting the state standard for protection of environmental health and public health. So, there are three other things I'm going to talk about quickly. The monitored natural attenuation. Although we have no free product floating in the water, that's a hazard, we do have some impacts because it leach from the soil. So, we have some groundwater, um, impacts there. But we know, once we remediate the source, once we take that soil out, those impacts will attenuate naturally. And you have to monitor them. And so, it's really up to the LEP to determine the frequency, depending on the concentrations, the use, um, how it's declining. So, there's a number of things in there. Long-term maintenance of the cap. So, whether it's a building or a parking lot, you have to maintain it. But whether it's a developer or the town, whoever is, um, owning that property, you typically maintain the pavement and the building anyway. It's part of just owning a property. So, if it is a developer, they're going to be responsible for maintaining the cap. So, you have a lot of avenues to pursue going forward, um, whether you want to bring in a developer, you're leasing, you're turning the property over. So, monitored natural attenuation and long-term maintenance of the cap, we know the cost for that can be covered by lease fees or sale of the property. And if you, actually, if you sell the property, you're looking for the developer to take those on. And liability protection. So, this is the most important and to me, it's the best tool the state has that has facilitated brownfields redevelopment. So, they actually have three different programs you can get in, depending on your deal and depending how you acquire the property. And so, um, we have filled out an application and we've already discussed with DEP enrolling in the program. They will accept this project and the town into the program. What it provides you is it provides you protection from third-party lawsuits. So, let's say, you know, contamination did migrate and it impacted somebody else's property. It protects you from any third-party lawsuits. Also, it brings in DEP's support for anything that has migrated off-site. You, under the program, only have to remediate on-site. Anything else that has gone off-site, Connecticut River, is handled by DEP. And then, the last aspect of this, very important. If DEP standards change in the future and the remediation criteria become more stringent, you are not required to go back and remediate to the more stringent requirement. The, all of those liability protections pass on to a developer, a new property owner. So, that program's very important for the town. And with that.
Take some questions?
Any questions? Tried to give a little background for some of you new faces.
No, I know. I've, I've read through the reports and everything, so I feel comfortable.
Lilia, did you want to say a couple of words about the brownfield program? And again, thank you so much for coming tonight.
Just to reintroduce myself quickly, Lilia Keltika, and I am a project manager at DECD, Department of Economic and Community Development. I like the word consultant, but I'm, I'm not there yet. Um, I work in the brownfield unit. We are a fast-paced, um, a popular program for the state of Connecticut that puts grants and loans in place to, uh, assess and environmentally remediate contaminated properties. And you definitely have one in town. And it's located at the three addresses that have been investigated at nauseam by Amy's firm. The town of Portland was a winner of a municipal brownfield assessment and inventory grant. That was our first $200,000 that went to the town, um, in regards to these properties. Uh, most of it has been spent down. It was the amount of $200,000. And quickly, it, and that's the way we like to, um, see that our projects are really taken care of. It kind of grew into a remediation grant. And from a round four to a round nine, it quickly, um, grew into a larger project. Um, I toured the project at least twice myself. Um, once I got to meet, um, Susan was there with me. And also the, uh, the budding, uh, property owner, the, uh, the Discovery Park.
Sean Hayes, I think Sean Hayes was with us.
Yeah, the business owner. And, uh, it's a real, uh, asset to have a business owner that is also willing to plunk money down to help the town purchase the property. And he was already, um, giving assurances of that at that time. So, that was a very good indication that the town and, uh, developer is, hopes for only the best to come out of this project. But in any case, it did, uh, score well in round four. It scored very well, uh, in round nine. It, uh, in $750,000 is the remedian, remediation money that's put in place for the cleanup. Um, all I can tell you is that we've been waiting for the town to successfully negotiate the purchase price. With that said, I think you've done a wonderful job because the amount that the property owner wanted was, I think, close to 800, $900,000 and you've really whittled it down. So, I congratulate your efforts for that. Um, you've done a good job with putting in the right, um, people, uh, to put in the right information to scare and bring the price down. So, that's always very helpful. Um, all I could tell you is that we've been waiting to put the money in place for the town to spend on the remediation. It's been on the books. The money's in place. I mean, I have to say it again, 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 um, the grant is still in place to be used on this property. If there's any questions, um, I can leave a couple cards, but, um, the money's in place from the department. Thank you.
Any questions for Lilia? Again, thank you very much.
Sure.
And thank you very much, Amy, for your, your good work. Um, in terms of what we're here for tonight, it is to set the date for the procedure for acquisition of the property. And there's a resolution in front of the selectmen. Um, there's several here that you will be apprised of. Let me just go over them with you. It's the green handout. The one that you will be passing tonight would be the resolution to recommend that the town purchase properties located at 222, 230, and 248 Brownstone Avenue and authorize an appropriation and bond authorization in the amount of $410,000. an appropriation and bond authorization in the amount of $410,000 to finance the purchase and to set the public hearing and the special town meeting dates to approve the same. The purchase price, it's a long resolution. I'm not going to read every, every sentence. But the purchase price that was negotiated is $385,000. And it's for 5.28 acres on the Connecticut River. And the other dollars would be due to approximately $25,000 for closing costs and bond issuance costs. And the town is looking to finance the purchase as we're doing with the sidewalks and some of the other projects that we're working on. We find that it is, interest rates are favorable at this point, and that's why we're bringing it forward at this time in this, in this way of purchase. The proposal is to have the public hearing on Wednesday, February 21, 2018, and a special town meeting to be held Wednesday, February 28, 2018. And let me just see. The next is the special town meeting resolution that would be presented at the town meeting. And then, excuse me, the legal notice for the public hearing is listed in the back. So, your, your resolution is presented on the top page. And it would be Wednesday, February 21 at, let's see, 7:00 PM, I think we said?
Public hearing, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Am I right?
Yep.
7:00 PM. Here in the Mary Flith. So, the only one that you're passing tonight, of course, is the, the resolution to approve it to go to public hearing and to town meeting. And then, when we get to those two meetings, there would, there would be other information provided at that time. Does anyone want me to read the entire resolution? Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second if I, well, I guess I heard your voice first, Rick.
Doesn't matter.
Any further discussion? If being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. So, the next time we will topic this will be on the 21st at the public hearing. And Amy, in particular, if you can be there, that would be helpful. I think your presentation was very, very, very good. And Lilia, you're more than welcome to come. I know your schedule may not permit it, but it's certainly encouraging to see if I, if I can, now that the, the motion has passed. It's very important to state how good of the brownfield program is in Connecticut. And we have so many industrialized sites throughout our state, and Portland is one of them. I mean, the people that lived here way before I have lived here really spent a lot of time producing, manufacturing, doing industrial work. And over the years, there's contamination in those lands. But these are the best lands for future economic development. And if we don't clean up Connecticut, we're not going to see Connecticut progress. And certainly, I'm committed, and I know Lilia and her team, and certainly Ty and Bond are also committed partners to making certain that Connecticut does progress and does achieve greatness. So, I'm very, very grateful for the program and for the administration in Hartford as well as our legislators in support. We need to do this desperately. I think we're ready to move on to the next topic. So, thank you very much again for coming. This is a request for water bill relief at 96 High Street. The owners of the property are here. And the recommendation, I'm going to read, and I know Rick is here too because Dick Cody did not stay. He was unable to. I have enclosed a copy of a letter dated, okay, this, this is the letter. And your recommendation, I know it's here, Rick.
Susan, if I...
Yes, go ahead. Thank you for having me.
If you guys want me to recuse myself, I will. One of my properties had a very high water bill. I don't know if it has any similarities. I didn't go to that hearing. I would have no problem voting on this one, but there may or may not. Mine's still being looked into, so I have no idea if there's any. But you guys tell me if you want me to not vote, vote. I could care a lot.
How, how, how do you feel? The rest?
I, I think that, you know, each, each case is on its, on its own merits.
I agree. But I, I just wanted to put that on the record.
All right. Thanks for letting us know. Let me read the excerpt from the Water and Sewer Commission meeting minutes. Mr. and Mrs. Donald Curley were present regarding their request for relief of their summer water bill, meaning the season, summer. The Water and Sewer Commission discussed their request. The commission asked Rick about their quote "normal" end quote "water" usage. Rick indicated that after reviewing their water history, their average usage based on the past five years for that summer quarter was 1,778 cubic feet. Based on that usage, their bill would be approximately $112. The Curleys indicated that they do not believe they had a leak during the time in question. Rick indicated that he couldn't explain the high usage. However, water meters are simple devices that typically only record water that passes through them. They do not typically over-record and then return back to normal. Norm Ward, a member of the commission, made a motion to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that we base the Curleys' bill on twice the average usage. That would result in a charge of $224 and that the water department write off what would be the remaining amount of $466. The Curleys were satisfied with this. Jim Rito of the commission seconded, and it was passed unanimously. So, I, I know some of you may not have been part of this procedure before. What we do is whenever there's a request for relief, it goes first to the Water and Sewer Commission unless it's below a very small, minor amount. But when it's of more substantial nature, and then it is our practice that the Water and Sewer Commission give us a recommendation. And then, the final say on that recommendation is made yes or no by this board. I'll open it up to the board for their consideration.
You know, I think that the board knows more than we do about water and sewer, and it sounds like they've made a compromise with the, the owners, the Curleys. And I don't know where the water went, but at least for now, whatever has happened, I assume that the meters are working correctly and that the, they're identifying the right amount of water that you're using. So, I would encourage the board to address, to support our commission.
Make that a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the commission's, what did they do?
Recommendation.
Their recommendation.
As noted in the memorandum of, from Richard Kelsey on February 6, 2018.
I'll second it.
Discussion? I want to thank the commission and thank the Curleys for coming. And is there any other questions? I would encourage you to continually check your meter and to determine any, any water usage. That certainly is something I'm remembering to do too because you never know. It's always something to keep track of.
Did they, I'm just curious, did they replace the meter?
It's a new meter.
Meter was tested. Existing meter was tested, bound to be reporting correctly, and however, a new meter was replaced.
Are you ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And thank you, Rick, and the commission as well. Good evening. The next item. The state of Connecticut no longer, for certain values of, of bazaar and raffle permits, they no longer issue them. And so, now towns will be doing this. And I believe you have a proposal within your packets of a fee schedule for bazaars and raffle permits. And there's different classes and the dollar amounts that are allowed by statute. We are not exceeding. You can see for a class one raffle, the proposed fee for the town would be $50. For the class two raffle, $20. For a class three bazaar with multiple prizes, $20 per day. For a class four raffle, $15. For a class five raffle, $80. Class six raffle, $100. And the class seven raffle would be the same as what is not to exceed the $300. And for your edification, for fiscal year '17, we processed six bazaar permits totaling $70 in value and two raffle permits totaling $35 in value. We're not too sure about the class seven raffles, so we may not be issuing any of those. Michelle takes care of the issuance of these permits, and she's done really a fabulous job for us over the years. But in the past, the permits, at first, they'd go to our office, then to the state, then back to us, and then we'd sign off on them. Then, the state took them over, so raffle permits were sent directly to the state, and then we would get them and I would sign them. Now, the state is not involved, except for very high stakes bazaars and raffles, as I understand it. So, we will be responsible for this. I'm not certain about enforcement and things of that nature, but we'll need to get the program started. It's a, it's a minor modest amount of revenue, but depending on how many raffles, I mean, maybe we will see more. I, I don't know. I can tell you, we have a lot of pistol permits in my office. And this is a much different, certainly, level, but there is some activity there. So, we would need a motion to approve this schedule of fees so that we can charge them as required.
So, moved on the fees?
Thank you.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ralph. Any questions or anybody having a raffle?
I just had one question is that, you know, in the past, when the state would require a license for a raffle, a bingo bazaar, that those people had to have fingerprinting and their, their fingerprints were registered with the state. Does that still happen?
We will not, we'll not be doing that. However, Lou, I think for certain levels, certain higher valued prizes, that may still be the same. I don't know. We, we have never done that because we do the, the very modest cost, quilts and other types of, of prizes that might be artwork, might be table cloths, things of that nature.
Cow chip raffles.
Cow chip is different. That's a different category.
Not a raffle. It's a different raffle.
Yeah, I think it's a higher level because of the state.
A higher level raffle?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm correct. I stand corrected.
They make a lot of money on those cow.
That may be where it deserves to stay. Stay low.
Yeah, okay. I think we're ready to vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Rick?
They're slipping.
Oh, okay.
Carl, they've gone whole.
Okay.
It's not terrible, but watch it.
Thank you, Rick.
When you walk out, watch it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we have too much left. The monthly budget report. Tom is not here tonight, but he did issue the report. I'd recommend your review of the report and then either call him or we will, if you would like, have it on another agenda so that you can ask and discuss. We'll be talking a lot about that in the next several weeks. So, we'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions, and I think Rick Char has a couple to propose tonight.
Okay, I have two nominations here. Let me make sure I got the right commission here. The Youth, was it Youth Services Commission, I believe? Michelle Donahue is an alternate.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, I meant to say Youth Services Advisory Commission.
Thank you.
And the next one is Zoning Board of Appeals, Eric Peterson for reappointment as an alternate member.
Yes. Is there a second? Seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sit.
And Jim has...
I have, I have three for tonight for the Youth Services Advisory Commission. I'd like to nominate, appoint Dana Gary from alternate to full member.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lou. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Also, like to make the motion to move Elizabeth Morin from alternate to full member, also for the Youth Services Advisory Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, I'd like them to make a motion to, for Shelley Nolan to join the Youth Services Advisory Commission as an alternate member.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Lou, do you want to do the refunds?
Okay, I make a motion to refund Ford Credit personnel property in the amount of $248.51.
Second.
Seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion to refund Libby, David and Libby, I'm sorry, David Libby and Evelyn Libby, $172.74.
Second.
Seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to refund Daniel Cassie, $108.
Second.
Seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to refund Honda Lease Trust, $373.44.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to refund Leon Case or Marilyn Case, $37.49.
Second.
Seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to refund G E L C O Corporation, $156.78.
Second.
Seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to refund Nissan Infiniti LT, $170.88.
Second.
Seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Make a motion to refund Donna McBride and Claire Dulce, $2,804.82.
Second.
Seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And make a motion to refund Curtis Lombard, $73.56.
Second.
Seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What's the two, the, the one for $2,804.82? What are we refunding? Taxes?
Typically, that would be someone that may have either transacted property possibly and the mortgage company paid it and they paid it as well.
Ah.
So, it was an error.
Something like that, okay.
It was likely paid twice inappropriately. I don't have the exact circumstances, but that's what we have found in the past.
And who, who determines these numbers? Tom's office?
No. Well, it would be under him, but it would be the collector of revenue. And she cannot simply give refunds back when they're due. They have to come to this board. It has to be printed in the agenda and it has to be voted on in order for it to transact. She can't just give back something that may have been a mistake or may have been an error based on the property mortgage holder and/or the property owner. And she's also adopted a new policy whereby she goes through and sees where there are refunds due and notifies folks so that that's appropriately taken care of as well.
So, these are mostly dealing with property taxes and...
It's only property taxes.
It's only, okay.